All right, I have Taft on, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this finance and policy meeting to order. The date is September 3rd. This is Tuesday. The time is 6:03 PM. Taft is joining us remotely, so he is on board, and we want to make sure we can't start the meeting until then. Members present are myself, Michael Reynolds, Mr. Taff Mattany, who as I said is remote, and Ms. King is out of town this evening. So first item we have is called Order. Taft, we should probably do the old thumbs up, mic check, video check, all that stuff. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have first item is going to be public comment. Seeing and hearing none, none online. Very good. Next item I'm gonna have, Mr. Mattany, is gonna be the reading and approval of minutes. I'll try to go slowly.
Motion for approval is presented.
Thank you. I have a motion to move for approval as presented. I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor as to approve the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. Mr. Mattany, we also have one for the Finance Committee Workshop, July 1st.
Motion for approval is submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany. I have a motion for approval as submitted. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimous. All right, next item is gonna be reports and communications from city officers. Mr. Duncan, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let everyone know that we have SUI coming up next Friday and Saturday at the Malden Cultural Center. We hope to have a great crowd out there and wonderful weather. It's gonna be a great, great time and hope everyone comes out.
That's all we have, Mr. Duncan. All right, next item is going to be, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Next item is Finance Director, Ms. Holly Abercrombie.
Good evening. I don't have too much to report. Besides, this year's just kind of started, so we're just floating through. You have the memo that we'll be talking about later about the surplus from last year. And then just a note to keep in mind that the official, official audit will kick off at the end of this month. They'll, they'll start their, you know, onsite, offsite work. And we'll have y'all some results once they finish. That's it.
Some audit numbers and I'm sure some audit awards again.
Yeah, we, we closed on the, or they, they actually had to put their Johnny Hancock's on it for the lease purchase on Thursday this past week for the $1.4 million. We have received that in the bank, so we are, we are processing through getting everybody to, to get their POs together and order their, their equipment. So we'll keep you updated as we get the new equipment.
Very good. There was a good bit in there, so we're excited to keep that in the inventory and keep the city moving forward.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. Mr. Putnam.
Good evening, Chairman Reynolds and committee. Just want to let you know that the city is in the, in the middle of its merit evaluations, yearly evaluations right now. And they have already passed through supervisors, department heads, and it's up to HR now. We're taking a look at it, and then we'll all sit down with our department heads, make sure we've got a sanity check there, and then be going through that, then that process we should be through at the end of September. We had mentioned insurance last, last time. All that's done. We're ready to go. And we have an open enrollment scheduled for the week of October 21st. And that is by far one of the earliest weeks we've ever done it, so.
Good. And that's a full week, or is that going to, how long does that normally take place? Your open enrollment. Your open enrollment, is it normally a week? Okay.
It is early. It's usually three days, but we'll probably have a, maybe a fourth for if we have any, you know, the folks we didn't get, but usually in three days we can take care of it.
Firemen work the 48, 96, 120, whatever it is now, so.
Yep, so that's gonna be a challenge this year, but we'll, we'll get it done.
Good. Well, we appreciate all of your hard work, Mr. Putnam. I know this can seem like the busy season as we get in and out of all that stuff, so appreciate you switching gears and getting into the merits and working with our department heads who do a great job, I think, evaluating and finding talent. So, thank you. Mr. Mattany, do you have anything to add? You want to do a thumbs up?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and I appreciate Mr. Putnam's work in getting the open enrollment moved up because it certainly makes it nice to not have to wait until the end of the year and try and squeeze everything in with the holidays.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mattany. All right, our next item is going to be unfinished business, which we have none. So our item after that is going to be new business. The first one up is going to be the ordinance 1045 franchise agreement with Frontier Communications. I think Mr. Duncan is going to talk about this for a minute, Taft, and then we'll be ready to talk about it.
Yes, sir. So highlighted briefly before that we have an existing provider, Frontier Communications, who's operating within the city. It was, we had found out recently that we did not have a franchise agreement with them. And so this is just to go ahead and establish that franchise agreement. In the packet, we did provide a copy of the draft agreement. We have since also received some additional comments from our attorney. And so the new draft has been presented physically to you, Mr. Chairman, and we'll have it out digitally as well to all members. But essentially, the only difference is the original language had on 5.19A and on 8, section 8, 6, or 8B, it had 30 days originally. Frontier had asked for it to be 60 days. Our counsel, our legal counsel would like that at 30 days. It just makes sense and is, is similar to our other franchise agreements. And the only other changes were our legal attorney warranted some language that was struck by Frontier on 7B reinserted. So you'll see that in red now, whereas the digital version would not have that language. And on 8A, he wanted to reinsert that language as well. And so we are still working with Frontier to finalize the verbiage. But as far as tonight, I feel like we have a close enough product that we can move this to full council for approval. I don't see any reason for us to hold up this franchise agreement since they are an incumbent provider, and we're just making sure we got all the paperwork squared away. And they are operating, I do believe there's a map in there where you can kind of see where they are in the city, which is pretty much everything to the east or right side of 417, and then below East, East Butler. So that's pretty much it. And this is a franchise agreement that would be for, I believe, 10 years.
All right, Mr. Putnam, going over, I guess, let me, let me ask Mr. Mattany first. Did you understand the additions that were changed in the addition, in the digital copy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Without the agreement in place, had they been paying the franchise fee that should have been assessed?
They have not.
So I didn't see a section here talking about that. How do we readdress that?
So going forward, as a condition of the franchise agreement, Frontier Communications will pay $1,000 per year or the privilege of operating in the city. We're not looking to go back and do anything post haste, but we'll, we'll make sure it's going forward.
Very good. Okay. I had no questions or concerns with Legals' opinions that you presented here. Mr. Mattany, if you have anything here would be a great time to ask. If not?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just wanted to say that generally I'm not a real fan of, of getting last minute additions before a meeting. However, since this is a relatively standard agreement and that this is a committee meeting, and we will have plenty of time to, to review and ask questions for the updated version of the agreement, I have no problem forwarding it to full council with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany. All right, I have a recommendation to forward to full council with recommendation of approval. I'll second that. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Carries unanimous. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mattany and Mr. Duncan. Next item is gonna be the FY 2024 surplus plan. This is on page 33 in your packet. Mr. Mattany, and I presume Ms. Abercrombie is gonna step to the podium and present?
Yes, as you can tell, the memo that we had a, we had a pretty good year. Revenues came in way above, and then our department heads did a good job at, at managing their expenses. And we were lucky to not have any, you know, disaster happen so that we had to spend over the budgets. So we finished with, you know, about 3.4 to 3.6 in the, in the general fund. And our recommendation is to move part of that over to the, to the capital projects transportation fund to help fund some of the ongoing projects that, you know, encompass various things within that, you know, sidewalks, trails, roads, you know, whatever else we have that can be covered by that. Because we have some ongoing projects that we, that we need to focus on. And then the other portion would go into just the capital projects fund to, to help fund the debt, debt service that we have on the capital leases. One of them, one of them still remaining, the one we, we just did. And some, some more reserve for the city center. That is our recommendation for what we, what we would like to do with the remaining funds.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. I think you said it really quickly, but you were absolutely correct. The department heads as well as, you know, you could say department heads always, all the way down to the guy driving a trash truck and, and in every part of the city does a great job fiscally, which every, every team member has an effect on the total amount here. So appreciate your leadership in that, as well as your management team and how you present and how you try to be intentional about how you spend taxpayers' dollars. That's obviously important to this council, or at least I can't speak for everyone, but at least to this council member. So appreciate that we have that fiduciary responsibility and feel like everyone, top to bottom, does a great job of trying to be thoughtful about how we expend taxpayer dollars. Before I go on, Mr. Mattany, you have anything? You want to jump in really quick?
No, Mr. Chairman, I would just move that we forward staff's recommendation to full council with recommendation for approval.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Little more discussion. You have anything here you want to add, Mr. Mattany?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie, really quickly. So when I look at the numbers, we're, as what we presented on transferring within our packet is a little bit different than what we projected that we'll have, what do we?
I was gonna, whatever, if there's, there's gonna be a difference, probably, because we're still, well, we only have one more thing left to receive, and it's only gonna be like $25,000 from P-Mont Natural Gas. And that's the only thing that I'm aware of that we have remaining. But there has been some other stuff since I've sent the report out. And my, my recommendation is whatever difference there is, we'd leave the 500 in the general fund, and the difference would go to the capital projects, not the transportation, just the capital projects. The 1.5 would go to the, the transportation and stay there, and then whatever the difference is would go into the other one.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. All right, with no other discussion, I have a motion and a second to forward to full council recommend, the staff's recommendation for the 2024 year-end budget summary. Motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimous. Or to full council recommendation of approval. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mattany for that. And Ms. Abercrombie, as well as department, your management team, staff as a, as a whole. This is one of those that it's a, it's a, this, that hard work to get to, to make a, an easy vote right here started a year ago, a year and a half ago. And so we certainly appreciate seeing that all the way through. All right, next item I have is gonna be public comment. Hearing and seeing none. All right, next one's gonna be committee concerns. Mr. Mattany, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany. All right, I have nothing to add. Appreciate you joining remotely, Taft. What do I hear in German?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move adjourn.
I have a motion. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimous. Thank you, Taft. Mr. Mattany. Our next committee meeting is gonna be Public Works, starting un momento.
All right, I call to order the Public Works Committee today. It is, what's it, 6:30 or 6, I'm sorry, 6:18 PM? I'm here. Mr. Reynolds is here as well. Ms. King is out for today. I also have Mr. Fleman as well. First of all, public comments. Are there any public comments? Right, right here. What do I hear on reading and approval of minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted for August 5th, 2024.
Second third? All those, any discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As habit moves on. All right, reports from Mr. Fleman.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee. Keep it brief. Since the last time we met, we have gone ahead and listed the surplus equipment on GOV deals in accordance with the resolution. We still have two more vehicles that are pending sale. There was a mix-up with when listing the VIN numbers. But as of this morning, we've cleared nearly $80,000 sale of old equipment. Additionally, since the last time we met, Public Works has taken on a few larger projects which are completed or near completion. One would be the beautification in front of the cultural center. Originally, we're intended to do that work during the fall. Mr. Duncan expresses interest to get it done sooner. If you guys have a chance, look at the front of the cultural center. It's never looked so good. Big shout out to my, my Parks and Grounds guys are doing outstanding job. The second thing is that the sewer division took it upon themselves due to continued issues with sewer at the cultural center that we went underneath the building and replumbed the 100-plus-year-old sewer system. So it's all new, and it allows us to access it in a more professional manner.
I don't know if I want the details on that.
The only way to access it before was to actually open the pipes up. There weren't cleanouts, so when they had clogs, you.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Now there's, it's, it's plumbed in accordance with code.
Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, unfinished business, none. New, new business?
Following up from our last meeting, what you have in front of you is a proposed revision to the utility ordinance as relates to sewer laterals within the city. You know, that during the last committee meeting, we, I stood up here and presented two viable options to address sewer laterals moving forward. And upon request by the chairman, Seth and I pulled back and revisited the issue with, I guess I would say a third option, a middle ground, one in which we approach it the same way we do stormwater, where if a resident was to pay for the materials, city would do the work. In the agenda item that I presented you, I gave a summary of what, what the materials would be expected for pretty much every sewer lateral within the city. Going rate from plumbers is about six grand. Our, our material only approaches about $1,600. So it is a viable solution for residents if this ordinance change was adopted. We still wanna, when we, as far as this proposal goes, we still want the language to clarify that the, the laterals themselves are still the property owner from the property line until the main. Only situation in which that would change, because that isn't spelled out clearly in our ordinances, is if the city did come in, we did the rehabilitation, the replumbing of it. And then at the end of it, we took ownership of the lateral from the property line to the main. And so in this ordinance change, we have the language which clarifies the city policy as it stood for since the beginning of time, and, and then a proposal for a modification to that ordinance that allows us to do the same kind of work off, right away work that we do for the stormwater program in the city. Now, the ordinance itself is, has been reviewed by Legal.
So which copy do you have?
The one that was in my mailbox.
Longer one? The one originally in the packet, Ms. Chairman, was what staff had worked on, and we were still waiting for Legal's review. Legal came back, and although the meat of it is the same, he added a lot more to it, which is fine. And so we appreciate that clarification, but your physical copy is the copy we'd like to consider tonight.
The blue and green here. You can see lots of additions. Okay.
Right now, the one that I have from my mailbox is updated. Okay.
So there is no financial impact if we, if we went with the middle ground approach. All materials, asphalt, backfill, everything would be paid by the homeowner. It would just be a soft cost, which is staff time and equipment, which is already budgeted for in the, in the, in the sewer department, sewer divisions budget. I cannot speak to how many requests will come in. I've been here for five years, and I think this issue's raised a TED handful of times. But potentially, because of the cost savings as opposed to a third-party vendor, it has the potential to be more, a huge opportunity for residents.
And we see this mostly from our older neighborhoods than our newer neighborhoods. And so Mr. Fleman did a great job of, of kind of modeling what costs would be to a potential property owner. In this case,
In this case, all-in, it's looking like a sixteen hundred dollar job, at least from the material side. And so this would be a, a way for us to kind of split that responsibility and establish a clear line of responsibility at the property line slash cleanout. And so yes, it does. We will see probably an uptick of these, but Mr. Fleman, how many permits have we issued in the right of way? Would you say in the last year or two for, for sewer work?
Or?
Yeah, so even before and private parties were paying, we sold only a handful. So we, we probably will see a few, but I don't, I don't see a mass run. Because if you don't have a problem, you're not going to call and ask for something that you don't think you need. So.
So one of the very quick discussion before this meeting. The concern I had is all of a sudden we do get an influx. We have, let's say, all four wants it now. So now that banner, the only thing I might wish to add to that, and maybe maybe we're already okay, just something to talk with Daniel. It, we're on our time schedule, not on the, not on the person needs the work done. So as long as we're protected and they say, hey, I need this done this month, we're not available for six weeks. I mean, we have to, I just want to set that priority in the homeowner, homeowners, you know, understanding that we have to fit it in our schedule. It's not, it's not our number one priority in what we're doing. So I don't know if we have to put that in the contract or protect it that way, but it's, it's the only real question I had here. And then the other piece of it is, and I don't foresee this happening, all of a sudden maybe there's forty people all want it done now. And that's just, all right, well, you know what? We're going to do, you know, twenty this year and twenty next year to get on the schedule. We're not going to change how we operate drastically based on influx of. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, sir, that does. What we can do is we can get with Daniel and, and find out, do we add that to one of the numbers he's proposed, or do we put that as a separate number, like a number, an item eight under section one? So under forty-nine. So we'll, we'll get with him and, and make sure we've got some language in there that stipulates that.
So, you know, one of the last things moving forward, because we are mimicking the way that the stormwater program works, is that there are contractual obligations that are executed between both parties before any work takes place. A whole harmless agreement, easement documents. And so it may be more, this is just my opinion.
Is in there.
May be more beneficial for that kind of language to be in that contractual document rather than the city ordinances.
See, and I think one of the, for me, one of the big, big benefits of this is we're, if we're, if there's any road being dug up, that we spent a heck of a lot of money to, to fix. And now we're at least making sure it gets repaired properly versus having a third party do it. To me, I think that's the big, one of the biggest benefits. Also is great for the, for our citizens who have this issue. But my concern is somebody doing something improperly or on the cheap. Reynolds, do you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you're good. Yeah. I like the premise of this. I think I've got a couple of concerns, probably going down the same path as you are. The biggest, the, the, the reason I like trying to look at this a different way is to protect asset, city assets, i.e. roads that we've just paved or, or what have you. So I think within the ordinance, we need to make sure it's clarified. And I just breezed through this, this copy. So the other one I didn't, I don't remember seeing it in there, but clarifying that if we were to go with this ordinance, that this is specifically for under our roads. That's what we're trying to protect here. I don't know if there's sewer mains in areas that could be you know, where it's a, to the back of a property or, or something like that, where it can be taken advantage of that way. So.
No, I, I was going to say, as far as I know, this would only be applicable to, to city mains.
Okay.
If it's a, if it's a rewall line, or excuse me, a metro line, this would not be applicable to them.
Okay.
Right?
So maybe we do need to revisit with Daniel, because there are instances around the city where a main could potentially be in a backyard on a sewer easement.
Right.
And so I guess, guess the guts of this would allow us to redo the service from the main to the edge of that right of way. Because it is, we own that right of way. We own that easement. Yeah, maybe we do need some more language to clarify that.
So we don't have to take action tonight. We, we can still work on this language, especially since we just got this copy this morning. But no, that's, that's a good point too. Yeah, because I didn't think of that.
And I think that one, and then there is, there is comments and clarification in here that this is going to be homeowner-driven. The other concern I would have is you know, name your plumbing company, company coming to the city and having us take care of the, this part of it and charging homeowner, you know, for the same work that we were performing. So I think some clarification on, on how we drive that in a way that this is probably homeowner-driven, make sure that we don't have.
Your concern is they say we're going to take care of it, charge for what we're going to take care of.
Right, so I could see instances where that happens.
Which we could do that with the understanding with the contract with the actual homeowner, not with the plumbing service of some sort. So maybe that's another protection we want to consider. This has to be with the homeowner themselves, signed and, and with, with us explaining.
That's typically what we do with the stormwater stuff. So that's, I think we basically are following that same model. So yeah, it wouldn't be with a third party. It'd have to be the property owner. Because they have to give us an easement to do.
Well, and again, and I like the surgical approach. I like the picking outside of the box on how to deal with what is, can be a very specific issue. I need to chew on whether it makes sense or whether or not it doesn't make more sense just to clarify our position and hands off of it and keep us out of it. So I like where you're going with this, but I still need to clarify in, in my head if I think it's the best route. But with that said, we can, how would you like to proceed, Mr. Chairman? Just hold it and?
I think right now, since we have some things to dot some i's and cross some t's, come back, if we could come back, is that acceptable?
Bring it up next.
Bring it up next month.
We'll put it back on the agenda next month.
Yep.
And I know we discussed, there may be some sanitation pickup discussion next month as well, if there's any thoughts you might have, you may want to talk to Mr. Fleman beforehand, if there's some some ideas to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fleman.
Thank you. Right, so it seems, no actions taken there. Public comment?
No, sir.
All right, committee concerns?
I have no concerns, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
What do I hear in adjournment?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
We'll stay for the party. We have a special called council meeting.
I will call to order a special called city council meeting on Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four. At approximately six thirty-five PM. Let the records reflect that Councilman Crayling Reynolds and Mr. Allgood or President Chamber is Mr. Matney online? He is not. Okay. We will proceed as he would want us to, and he can join us in progress and we'll make a note of that if he does that. Along with Seth and Cindy are here also. All right, we're brand new in September, so our invocation, pledge allegiance, Mr. Crayling.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the great things you've done for us. And thank you for the things you're doing in our hearts, in our minds, in our spirits. Help guide us, grant us wisdom, help us do the right thing as servants to the city of Malden. Thank you for looking out for us. It's Christ's name, mom. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crayling. The only item on our agenda is a consideration of new business, a motion to enter into the executive session to consider a contractual matter regarding a codes enforcement issue as allowed by state statute, section thirty dash forty dash seventy A two. And then also an economic development matter related to Bridgeway Station as allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four dash seventy dash A two. It's the pleasure of council.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Crayling. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Reynolds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion in executive session, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries four zero. We will stay in chamber tonight. Hey, council is returning from executive session to open chambers, public chambers at approximately seven oh three PM. Mr. Reynolds, would you like to report out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, reporting out of executive session at seven oh three. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All right, next item on agenda is possible actions on items discussed in exec session. We'll take them the way they were entered here. Our first one was for a contractual matter regarding a code enforcement issue. Any possible action on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the city administrator to spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars out of general fund balance for an emergency codes enforcement action.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Crayling. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Reynolds, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries five zero. Whoops, sorry.
No, you're good. Mr. Mayor, I was just going to report that Mr. Matney, I didn't hear you report that Mr. Matney entered executive session.
Actually, I, I did that earlier, I think.
Okay.
Get him.
Just making sure.
At six forty. But, well, yeah, good idea. Go ahead, Will. Mr. Matney did join us via Zoom at six forty-two PM. That way Cindy will have it in the minute she can hear. Good point. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay. Next item consideration, economic development matter related to Bridgeway Station. Is there any action? Possible actions on that item coming out?
No action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Hearing none. Next item for us is council request. Any council request? All right, seeing and hearing none. What's the council pleasure on adjournment? Mr. Cray. All right, I'll put Mr. Matney as a second on that. He's not as speedy as if when he's via Zoom. There's a little second delay there. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, we stand adjourned at approximately seven oh six PM. Thank you, everyone.